Hello and good afternoon. Welcome to an extremely special episode of Hard Lens Media. We have a very jam packed episode today and we are starting off with one of our special guests who is joining us here in the studio, Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chui Garcia, who is also an Our Revolution Illinois endorsed candidate for the 4th Illinois Congressional District. Sir, thank you very much for joining Hard Lens Media.
It's great to be in your studios. Very colorful, very inspirational and good ambiance.
Well, we try our very best, sir, but we're really glad to have you here. So I think initially, let's get this started. When Congressman Gutierrez stepped down sometime earlier, a few months ago, in regards to being a congressman for the United States Congress, a lot of people were taken aback that he was, you know, leaving that office. So for our viewers, what were the initial challenges to get your campaign to where it is at right now? And going forward, what do you want to say to the people who thought you might be a potential candidate for the mayoral run in 2019? Because last time, you were a very powerful opponent against Mayor Rahm Emanuel.
Well, one, I seriously looked at contending in a rematch in 2019 for very obvious reasons that the city has serious challenges facing it, inequality, the concentration of poverty in many areas of the city, particularly the west and the south side, a public school system that continues to be underfunded and significantly challenged. A lot of privatization in the system has occurred. And then, of course, the violence in the city that continues to plague Chicago, give us a bad reputation and taking a tremendous human toll. It's coupled in the areas of the greatest concentration of poverty. In terms of entering the race for Congress, it was not an easy decision on the first account. It was difficult to abandon the idea that I would not be in the 2019 contest, though I'm hopeful and optimistic that the prospects for change in Chicago continue, both in executive offices, like the mayor's office and the other citywide, and in the city council. I think there's tremendous potential for a change in electing more progressives, people who reflect forward thinking and who want to do away with inequality in Chicago. I also, when the congressman first told me that he was thinking about retirement, I sort of laughed it off, didn't think it was serious. The conversations continued and it was only till close to the day that we both decided that it was something that I was interested in pursuing, given the great urgency in Congress to have a voice like mine, someone who's lived the immigrant experience, someone who can fight and push back on Donald Trump, and someone who can also be an important voice and a leading member of the Progressive Caucus with relationships in other caucuses in the Congress, like the Hispanic Caucus and the Black Caucus in Congress. I thought that it made a lot of sense because there is a great urgency to have, I believe, a voice like mine representing the 4th District, embracing of the diversity in the 4th District, but of course, very mindful that immigration reform has to continue to be a great priority, that we need to stimulate the economy, to create a fairer economy for all, including living wages. So an infrastructure bill is something that I want to see happen, but a real one, not the proposal that Donald Trump has given us, which essentially gives more profits to those who already are doing quite well in society. And finally, I'm very concerned about the future of access to higher education and career paths and workforce training. So the idea that making higher education accessible and affordable, great priorities for me. And of course, being that I am a Bernie-cred, I very much favor the move to improve Obamacare and to move it toward universal healthcare, a Medicare-for-all system with the single payer.
Now, of course, let's talk about Bernie-cred, Our Revolution, people who want to reform the DNC. Currently, a lot of people, especially independents and progressives, are really critical of current Democratic leadership. For example, with the government shutdown, many of the corporate Democrats did not really go to bat for the DACA recipients. And even though DACA recipients have a huge approval rating, when you have all Silicon Valley write to Congress saying, "Do not deport these people. We need them here," it's quite clear that the DNC, at least this current DNC in the Congress, is tone deaf. So essentially, let's say you are in the Congress right now and there is another potential government shutdown, or there is Republicans who are refusing to work any kind of deal out with the Democrats. Are you going to fall in line with the DNC establishment? Will you fight back? Will you also have to deal with people like Nancy Pelosi? What will you do?
If you look at my history in Chicago and in Chicago politics, I probably have been fighting machine forces in Chicago longer than anyone else from a working class base in the city and have succeeded and held the ground, if I may, over a period of over almost 35 years now. That will be my posture in Washington. However, what I think will be different is I think we've got an excellent shot at winning a majority in the House of Representatives for Democrats. I think I can help move the needle with other members of Congress who perhaps have not had as much fortitude to fight on principle, and I think I can be a very positive force, all the while focusing on creating some additional middle space in the middle for more bipartisanship and collaboration. I have a history of having done that in Springfield as a state senator, where I was able to pass legislation when Democrats were in the minority during the early 90s. So I've done that before. I want to be that type of voice in Congress. And of course, one of my great priorities in Congress will be to overturn Citizens United and to introduce a public funded system of elections, as I have tried to do in Cook County with the ordinance that I introduced, to move us away from the influence of big money and corporate money in politics, to a small donor system that levels the playing field, that allows anyone to run for office.
Now, recently Senator Bernie Sanders endorsed you. You had a huge rally at the Apollo 2000 Theater. And of course, Our Revolution Illinois has also endorsed you as well. So pretty much, you have a lot of support from a lot of progressives and independent groups. But outside of your race, what have you seen in regards to money in politics and how Citizens United has not only affected federal elections, but state elections as well?
Look, it's no secret that the influence of big money and politics and corporate interests are turning people off. People are not voting at the levels of participation that we need to have an engaged citizenry. That will only happen when we remove the influence of the Koch brothers, of corporate interests, both in Washington DC, in state capitals, and even in city councils, only as we move people to grassroots action and create systems for small donor systems to be able to, again, level the playing field, prevent candidates and elected officials from spending so much time on fundraising, having to amass huge amounts of dollars to be able to compete, either to run for office or to keep a seat that they have and try to campaign and use incumbency to their advantage. We should level the playing field, relieve incumbents and challengers of the burden of having to raise big money. If you raise a certain amount of money from small donors in your district, you can run, you can compete, and what you will get is better accountable government that is loyal to the voters of those districts and to the small donors of those districts, thus freeing everybody from the burden of constantly engaging and wasting time and resources on just fundraising. That's what corrupts politics and that's what corrupts government.
Now, let's look at the Democrats as a whole, because in 2016, they lost to Donald Trump and in turn, it allowed many people to wonder what their message is. So with this current Democratic Party, at least looking at the ones that are still in office, what is the message that they failed to reach out to working class families who are struggling? You have people working two or three jobs. If they have an accident or they have to pay a medical bill one bad day and they lose their home, their house, their job. What's the message that working class families need to hear from the Democratic Party?
I think the Democratic Party has to represent the fight for greater prosperity in the American economy. We also have to stand up against corruption in politics and the influence of big money. What does this mean? This means ensuring that government, the federal government especially, provides the essential things in life for all Americans, and that is a living wage, so that people can make ends meet. That will stimulate the economy to have more shared prosperity. You need to have a real education system that doesn't rely, as it does in Illinois, on a regressive system of property taxes to fund our schools. You need good infrastructure, good roads and good transportation, public transit in particular, to move people from where they live to where the jobs are, as we figure out to how more intelligently distribute those jobs, so people aren't spending two or three or four hours traveling from their home to their jobs, wasting time, being denied the opportunity to be with their families. We've got to be smarter. Third, we need a system of care for everyone in terms of healthcare coverage, and that is insurance, medical insurance. The only way that you'll have more prosperity in America is if we move toward a Medicare-for-all system, a single payer system, that all industrialized countries in the world have, but we don't. I think that the American people today understand this more clearly than ever before. I think there is a great opportunity in the horizon at hand that will give us an opportunity to, in Congress, over the next four to six years, make transformative changes that will move us away from this inequality, the concentration of wealth in fewer and fewer hands, and ensuring that there is greater domestic prosperity on the one hand, and begin a new period of greater peace and stability in the world, so that we're not having to fight multiple wars that were started on a premise that there was a threat where there wasn't a threat. Part of the reason we have such a huge budget deficit and a huge debt is because of the wars that were started by previous presidents, that we today are spending huge amounts in terms of the defense budget, because those wars were initiated without justification and they've turned out to be a huge cost, coupled with the Great Recession of 2008, 2009. We have not recovered. That's why the American people are hurting, and that's why Donald Trump was able to essentially hijack the message of Bernie Sanders and talk to what people wanted to hear in terms of their economic insecurity. He's, of course, betrayed the promises that he made to bring greater prosperity and more equality to the American people, and that's why we have an opportunity to step forward, lay out a clear agenda that will surely bring greater prosperity for people and give them a better chance to raise their families across the land.
Now, I want to do a quick follow up, especially in regards to single payer healthcare, universal healthcare. Why has there been so much resistance, at least from elected officials, to really embrace this, you know, policy, whereas we look at other developed nations like Germany, Switzerland, they all have, or Canada, they all have single payer healthcare in one way or shape of another. Why has it been resisted so much here in the United States?
Because very wealthy interests in our society, for a period of 40 years, have been messaging that we have the most advanced healthcare system in the world, that the quality of care is better than any other countries. What they fail to tell you is that people increasingly have lost access to that care, that the only people that can have that care, for the most part, are those who have the right insurance policies that have become very difficult for working people to attain. And that's what they point to. And those things are true. We're very advanced, but we don't utilize our system correctly and we don't allow it to benefit all of the people in society. So one, they have created a framework in which they argue that we are the best. The problem is that not everyone has access to the best. There's still too much influence from corporate America, from Big Pharma, and from the industries that play a leading role in organizing the health system in America. So they have succeeded in getting Americans to think that if we change our healthcare system, that somehow it will lead to rationing, that it will leave people without access to healthcare, that there'll be some kind of a Soviet economy that won't work and that will put everyone at risk. That is false. If you simply look at the system in Canada, if you look at the systems across Europe and all over the industrialized world, they have pretty good access to healthcare. You don't hear about people from Canada crossing the border to come to look for pharmaceuticals in our country or for medical procedures. They provide for their country and their people pretty well. And that's why, on the contrary, so many Americans have been going to Canada to acquire medicines, to have medical procedures, because they have a health system that is more equitable and that provides the most basic things in life for everyone in their country.
So I want to add, this is a specific instance. So you had about a year ago, Cory Booker was one of the Democrats, again, that we're talking about, that had been blocking this kind of legislation specifically when he wanted to block our reimportation of drugs, even though many of those drugs remain in the US. What was your take on that situation, when that happened, and how do you feel about the current Democrats that are, again, the current, the current way the Democratic Party federally is configured, that something like that would happen?
I have no doubt that we are at an important turning point in American history, where people recognize that the concentration of wealth is producing many ills in our society, especially inequality, our inability to provide basic healthcare for everyone. I think that the American public is very interested in looking at the proposal that Bernie Sanders in the Senate and several members in the House have been advancing. I think there is a greater openness to that. People recognize the benefits of Obamacare, even though we don't have the public option, because that was negotiated out of the deal. I think people are very open to that, as they are to removing the influence of Big Pharma as part of our health industry and the undue influence that they have because of their presence through lobbyists in state capitals as well as in Washington DC. So they're open to breaking up the monopoly that exists, the concentration of wealth, and ready to move to remove the influence of corporations and big profits over the interest of average Americans wanting the basic healthcare that they deserve and that they can have, simply if we move forward with a significant revolution in the politics of our country by removing the big influence of money in both Washington and in state capitals.
Now, I want to return back to Illinois, because people who live here, we know the long, sad history of, you know, corruption, as well as most famously, the Democratic machine. And currently, Cook County Assessor Joseph Barrios, as well as Speaker of the House, Michael Madigan, are both in the newspapers. People are seeing a crack in the machine. What are your initial thoughts on, at least this local politics is seeing, these two individuals being called out by grassroots activists and progressives, calling them for a step down and to remove themselves from office? What are your thoughts on at least these two individuals?
I think Cook County and the state of Illinois are on the cusp of significant change in as far as who the Democratic Party leaders of the future will be. The fact that in Cook County, you have the Assessor also leading the Democratic Party as chairman and presiding over a system that is unfair, that is broken, that has a very regressive impact, particularly on Latino and African-American communities, that has been described as a perfect example of institutional racism, because it creates a reverse Robin Hood effect as it relates to our property tax system. It gives the wealthier areas of the county a lower property tax assessments, both in residential as well as in commercial properties. And when those interests are able to hire lawyers who do property tax appeals and hire firms that specialize in that, who are wired into the Democratic Party leadership, it really exposes the corruption that has existed in the system for such a long time. I think that as we expose the flaws in the property tax system in Cook County, it's raised a greater awareness about the unfairness of relying on property taxes to fund things like education at the statewide level. People want change. And now people are thinking about the pluses of moving away from the over reliance on property taxes, especially given how crooked that system has been in Cook County, and moving us toward a progressive tax system that relies on people's ability to contribute, meaning that those who earn a higher income, and of course, I'm talking about a progressive income tax in Illinois, being able to contribute more than the person who is struggling to make ends meet through his or her job in the economy. So I think that this is a transformative moment in Cook County. I think it will further the debate about why Illinois needs to move away from property taxes and toward a more progressive and fair tax system. It's impacted the debate in the gubernatorial election. So I think we're living a very important moment where changes in Cook County will have a positive impact across the state of Illinois and usher in new leaders in the Democratic Party.
Now, let's return back to President Trump, which, of course, him and his policies towards people of color, working class families, and women in particular, are regressive. And we've seen firsthand with the Women's March, women are starting to get actively involved more in politics, but yet this administration continues to have harsh policies towards women. So what are your policies to protect women's rights here in the United States, as well as to ensure that they have a voice to play in not only politics, but in all sorts of business here in the United States?
The misogyny and the pronouncements and the unprecedented level of disrespect from this administration, from the President and his administration toward women, I think is raising a great level of awareness in our country. It is exposing the dominance in our society by males in all aspects of society, from the workplace and the experiences that women endure, day in and day out, with sexual harassment, the inequity in pay. Women don't earn what men earn. They earn less across the board. They don't have positions of power, either as the heads of enterprises or corporations or companies, managers or supervisors. And women are fed up with this. The pronouncements of the President have helped to galvanize and mobilize women. Women want a voice in everything in our society, whether it is politics, whether it's the economy, whether it's the workplace and the role of women struggling for equality. The Women's March, the learning around the sexual harassment instances in different industries across our country and in the world has mobilized women like never before. I think women are going to be elected to office at the local level, at the state level, and at the national level. It is causing, I think, a real search in our society to get at the roots of male chauvinism and machismo, the dominance that males have had in our society, and really forcing all of us to rethink how we think about women, how we engage with women, how we treat girls, our daughters, our neighbors, in all settings in society. And I think this will add to the transformative period that we have entered as a society. So it's the contradictions in government. It is the revelation of exploitation of women that is really forcing a national discussion and a reflection, and I think leading us all to seriously rethink how we, as a society, will move forward in a more equitable and respectful manner as it relates to women. I think if there's one thing that we've learned from the revelations of the past several months, is that when women come forth and complain of sexual harassment, they need to be heard. They need to be taken seriously. Their allegations need to be investigated and expeditiously, and there need to be consequences. In politics and in government, those consequences cannot exclude anyone. Party leaders, leaders in government, we've got to send a message that we are a society that believes in equality and respect, and that we will not turn back the clock and we will embrace women and ensure that they have an opportunity to participate as equals in everything that is our society.
Chicago, being a major metropolitan city, suffers from gentrification, but this isn't just one isolated incident. It's happening in all other major metropolitan cities here in the United States. This system, is it to you a form of racism? And why is it yet to get the media attention? And what could be introduced in Congress to protect working class families from being displaced due to the ever growing reach of gentrification?
I think the gentrification and the process of gentrification that we are experiencing in Chicago has an economic dimension and it's coupled with a racial dimension. Communities that at one time had populations of people of color, lower income, working class, are being displaced because cities are becoming more exclusive, less affordable for families. I think this is driven by inequality in our society, by the concentration of wealth, and by the fact that we have not developed policies in cities or metropolitan areas, for that matter, that seek to create truly diverse communities. Communities that are economically diverse, that have people with different incomes living in them, that are not racially and ethnically diverse, and that are not friendly to families and working class families. We need more multi-family housing desperately in Chicago. We have sat on resources. A great example of this is the Chicago Housing Authority, which at one time was sitting on almost a half billion dollars in funding when there is a shortage of funding for housing across the city of Chicago. So we need to develop policies that will bring us more equitable development and that will end the patterns of segregation. The Metropolitan Planning Council in Chicago has issued a report. It is an analysis of what has happened in our society over several decades. The levels of racial, ethnic segregation continue to haunt Chicago. They haunt other cities, but it makes the Chicagoland region one of the most segregated in the country. There is a cost to continuing to move this way as a region and as a society. It is bad for us that, you know, 60 years after Brown versus Board of Education, we still have schools and neighborhoods that are racially segregated. That is a bad reflection of us as a society and the lack of equity that we have failed to achieve to create, again, opportunity and prosperity for more people.
This is kind of more, different, on a different scale. So you've been doing this, like I said, for a very long time. You've seen the organizations as they've grown, what makes them work. I'm curious to see how you see the, in the real growth of social media, the internet, and how you see that that has reshaped moments and made moments like these possible, where I would say personally, I don't think that the stuff that's happening right now could be possible without social media or the internet. What's your take?
Without a doubt. First, I must confess that I am not that technologically adept, but I have many conversations with people who are. And I see the interaction that goes on in social media. I see young people and how they communicate. The vast complexity of the technological revolution in communications is having a big impact on everything that has occurred, especially in the last five years alone. If we think about how the country has changed in terms, for example, of gender equality, of the LGBTQ community, the current debate around weapons that are easy accessible, the automatic assault weapons, and the role of young people in Florida, for example, given the latest massacre that occurred in South Florida, in that school, the impact that social media had on the presidential campaign in 2016, the success that Barack social media had on the presidential campaign in 2016, the success that Barack Obama had in his 2008 campaign and the 2012 campaign, the utilization of those means of communication by Bernie Sanders, and how the Me Too moment that we are living have all been driven in part by the ability to transmit information instantaneously and raising the voice of people who before might have been isolated and not able to come forward and tell their impactful stories.
Out of the legislation that came out from these special sessions held in Springfield last year that have centered around education reform, there was finally the compromise for an evidence-based funding. CPS was one of the largest factions of that, but yet we're still seeing schools shutting down, or at least on the table to shut down primarily, like V4 schools in Inglewood. And there was massive community backlash, and now they're trying to, like, slowly, over the next couple of years, have the students transferred to other areas. How can you fight for students that are seeing their communities and their schools closing down, especially when just a few years ago, we saw Rahm Emanuel, under him, about 50-some schools closing down, and they're usually in the west and south side communities? So how will you fight for these children that deserve the right to education?
Well, the closing of almost 50 schools almost five years ago in Chicago Public Schools, I think, really raised the awareness and the ire of communities that are most affected. These are some of the poorer communities in Chicago, most of them African-American, some areas that were Latino schools. And while this was happening, we continued with the drive to continue to open charter schools. 130-plus charters have opened over a, I think, 10, 12-year period in Chicago. People feel like there are other interests other than education interests that are driving this agenda that they see as being a privatizing force of public education in Illinois. Many people have reservations, for example, about the system that was set up to provide scholarships for students in private schools that winds up giving corporate interests, you know, an opportunity to continue to play an increasing role in public education and moving it more toward a privatized system. There's great concern about this, and people have been informed by developments in places like New Orleans where you basically eliminated the public school system and replaced it with a system of charter schools. And I think what bothers people the most and what raises the greatest concern is that these charters are not proving to be superior to the public and the neighborhood schools that we have in most communities across Chicago. So you're replacing one public system with a privatized system, but you're not showing that there is necessarily much improvement. Most charters do not, cannot demonstrate a compelling case that they perform better, even though they have the ability to be selective or to cherry pick students. They draw the better students from some of the neighboring, neighborhood schools, and it is really creating, I think, lots of consternation in communities where CPS leaders and bureaucrats want to continue to close more schools while opening up charter schools. And that's been the experience on the west side, in particular, in the North Longdale community, and now where that is happening is on Chicago's south side. So there's good reason for people to have many questions about it, and I'm glad to see the pushback and the resistance on the part of people in the Inglewood community asking, well, what is the future of our school system if we're closing all of these schools down? And then we have to factor in, what is the most immediate concern that students and parents have, and that is safety. The ability to travel to and from school safely, and who's going to guarantee that? In addition to, the bigger question that people are asking, and that is, is this a plan that is about removing poor people from the areas that have become more prime for real estate development in Chicago? And if so, what's the future of poor people and working people and their ability to live close to Chicago's downtown area, which is a big job engine and where all of our cultural amenities tend to be concentrated? So these are all questions that I think communities are processing. All of it is coming back to ask the question about whether there might be afoot a plan to re-engineer Chicago's population.
And a final question, and again, we are so grateful to have you here on our show. For our viewing audience, can you please tell them where they can learn more about your campaign, where they can find you on social media? Because as we all know, March 20th, the primaries are coming close, and they want to know more about the candidates, so where can they find?
Absolutely. So again, I'm Cook County Commissioner Chuy Garcia, candidate for Congress in the fourth congressional district. If folks want to learn more about our campaign and our positions, they can look up chuygarciaforcongress.com. They can become engaged, they can become informed, and if they want to learn more about politics and roll up their sleeves and get exposed to it, they can also volunteer.
All right, that's a great note to end it on. Thank you so much for joining Hardlands Media. We're, once again, glad to have Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chuy Garcia. He's running for the fourth Illinois congressional district, sir. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much, and muy buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Thank you.